Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. So I guess we're gonna start with Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Well, Chairman tonight, Acting Chairman, Vice Chair of the Committee, members of the Planning Board. First, I want to thank you for your service as you all are volunteers that serve the town of Templeton and the Planning Board. It's a very important position and want to thank you for the time you give to the town of Templeton. As many of you have seen me before on TCTV, I'm the Municipal Management Fellow. I work alongside Carter Terranzini, the Town Administrator, and work for the Board of Selectmen here for the town of Templeton. I came here tonight because I wanted to chat with you. I've been going to all the other volunteer boards, commissions, committees, and hearing their input on whether it be the challenges and obviously we're looking at volunteer recognition. I wanted to get your feedback as a committee on any challenges you see for whether it be communication with the town, whatever it may be, that we can help work with you on. Or perhaps, and also on a separate note, the recognizing of volunteers. There's been suggestions of just a simple acknowledgement at town meeting, not the whole ward, the whole plaque, you know, having Volunteer of the Year for each year, many, setting a criteria. I just wanted to get your feedback and say hi to all of you and and I just saw Dennis last week, so. At the CPC and Open Space Committee meeting and Frank at the last, well, the last meeting I was at here. So with that, do you have any suggestions, Mr. Chairman, open up to the members here?
Anybody in the board?
Just, I'm, hi, I'm Kristoff. What is, who are you, from where?
Oh, the Board of Selectmen's office.
MF, MF.
Yeah, I know, that's Mallory put that on. I mean, she, she wanted to abbreviate it, I suppose. I'm the Municipal Management Fellow. I work, I'm training to be the, soon to be in October, the Assistant Town Administrator, but I have to go through my competencies laid out by the Board of Selectmen before I can take that role, then training me to be the Town Administrator.
So you're taking over Carter's position ideally?
That would be.
He's hoping. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work on hope.
You're just trying to get around and meet everybody and see, see what we do and.
Absolutely.
Is there any way you could speed that up?
I'm still learning a lot.
One of the funnier boards, I'd like to think, but you know.
Yeah, you're certainly open, you know.
Okay. You're welcome, yeah.
I mean, on a personal level, you know, we do this because I like the town. I want to see the town finally, you know, make that turning point and be successful. I still think we have a long way to go, so it's like, you know, I wish I had more time to serve on more boards to be able to, you know, give more input, but I think that's, you know, for recognition, I'm not really looking for, you know. Kristoff gives me a pat on the back every once in a while, that's, that's all I need. See, I'm good. See, for another five years.
Well, and that's what was a suggestion on some boards that a lot of the members that put in a lot of time don't want any recognition or any particular, but I'm just kind of giving ideas. We're gonna look at a metric system in order to do it and see what you think. I mean, you are the volunteers. I mean, you, you serve in these important functions. I mean, like the Planning Board has a lot of important decisions that they have to make. I mean, that's an important function of the town of Templeton municipal government, so.
I got a comment. I mean, as far as on the communication side of things, I do not think the boards in the town communicate well at all. I don't think that's a secret, but it hurts business, it hurts growth, it hurts the citizens, it makes people want to leave. I mean, if you looked at the casualties of that for the last 10 years, and I haven't, I don't have them cataloged in my mind, some people do, but that's something that could definitely have room for improvement. But you don't, you don't get, you don't necessarily, you get, you get from Mallory. Every, every board from Mallory gets a cheerful, like, nice, like, awesome person trying to help, but you do not get that experience transferring information between the different parts of the town. And I don't, I don't know what the root of it is, I don't know what the solution of it is, but I know that that's something citizens experience, the boards experience with each other, businesses experience, and folks looking at Templeton as a place to live, work, or stay experience.
And kind of to follow up with that, it is the support staff, because obviously we're not here the whole time, so we kind of have to rely on, when we walk in and say, hey, what's been going on, and kind of fill us in and, you know, and sometimes answer those questions that, you know, we need to know to be able to move forward. So really supporting the support staff is one of the major, I think, goals to really help us as a board to be successful in that.
So essentially administrative support with communication between the bodies and having a central information center, if you will, on decisions that were made, is that.
Yeah, and a purpose. Like wherever, I mean, if wherever the select board or the citizens, whoever, with the chicken or the egg, right? I mean, we vote to hire the selectmen, they're supposed to support us. Wherever they see the vision for where we're going together, we could use a little unification, we could use a little on the, on the municipal government, you called it, on the government level, whoever's part of that should be smoking the same cigarette at least a little bit, you know. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be combative.
Yeah, and this is an elected body, right?
Correct.
I don't know.
So when the select board's elected and, you know, I mean, I could see where there could be possibly where, as opposed to an appointed body where you have to go to the select board, you, you see, you discuss more with them. And that's something that I could look at as a, certainly a challenge that could be addressed in my report. Anything else?
Would a, some kind of a public forum bulletin board type thing help out on that?
I don't, I don't know, Dennis. I, I really don't know, and I'm, and that's why I say, I see it as a casual observer in a lot of ways. I think, I mean, I love this board, we get stuff done and we, we have a good time doing it, but just when I see the different groups sort of almost cross firing at the same thing, they're both looking at one goal and missing the mark or something. Somehow we're not.
There isn't any correspondence between departments and boards.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's, I mean, each, each meeting has minutes and they are published in their own organization, but nobody has, has time to go through it.
Read all the minutes of all the meetings.
Exactly.
So, I don't know if there's.
Just as leadership, he's, if this gentleman's looking at, you know, being the Town Administrator, I mean, that's kind of administrators putting a lot of the pieces together. I mean, if I got an email from somebody that said like, hey, we really want to, you know, plant 200 trees on Earth Day, I might plant one, but, you know, if we, if we don't, you know, if it's not, if nobody's leading and saying, in order to plant 200 trees on Earth Day, this board should do this, this board should do that, this board should do that.
I think sometimes having a common person such as yourself, you know, if you know that the Planning Board's working on a project and then you can reach out to conservation and kind of, sometimes we need that liaison to go back and forth and kind of bring the message back and forth. Where some, I mean, we try to reach out when we can, but it doesn't always, you know. But if you have a full-time person who is around, who can kind of work on that, I think that would be important as well.
Yeah, and I think that's something between the two of us that we could work on, Mallory and I work on various projects.
That's what we're trying to head towards.
Exactly, yeah.
And like, we, we communicated, I believe it was Stone Bridge and a couple of the projects that we, we communicated back and forth and maybe having a direct line as opposed to me going to Mallory, then going to you.
Right.
But we, we could work that out and then I could get, get you on my mailing list and we could address that moving forward.
There's a ton of good people on all these boards that are working very hard to, for the good of the town. We're all working towards the same goal, it's just sometimes it feels like we're not and, you know, we should be.
I appreciate it and unless somebody says something, you know, we don't really know about it or, you know, just kind of keep going on, but if there's something that comes up. Dennis and I worked on various other boards in town and we've worked together and I, I think you were pretty happy with the results that we, that we collaboratively took on.
Certainly the community TV station helps a lot in that respect, but still getting a lot of the details is difficult.
Well, thank you to the Planning Board. Feel free to stop by the Selectmen's office anytime. I'll be more than happy to chat with you if you have any questions regarding the, you know, with the Selectmen's office. I'll be more than happy to sit down, work with any one of you with any concerns or suggestions or ideas that you may have literally just right across the hall and, you know, are ours and thank you for your suggestion and see you around.
Great meeting you.
Good, nice to meet you.
Thank you. Have a good one, thanks.
Okay, so next up looks like the continuation of the peer review. For Bunny's Dairy Bar.
It was comfortable a little while ago.
For the record, Wesley Fliss, Whitman and Bingham Associates. I believe about a month ago or so, Jamie Rowe from our office came and spoke with you guys about the peer review that we had done at the time. And so the peer review had some items on there. Hannigan Engineering has revised the plans, majority of the items have been taken care of. So what I did is I put together a second letter, just going over the items that we had on there in the initial letter and just, a lot of them already have no further comment. Couple items that of note would be item number four regards to the lighting. There was a comment that they, you know, they came back with a response saying that the only lighting was going to be on a telephone pole. And so I don't know if the board would want to make a condition on the decision that the lighting be downward facing, that doesn't shine out into the street or onto any abutting properties. Then on number 17, and then I believe the, you know, we've already had a conversation with them about this. They showed one handicap space and they added that to the plan, but the striping needs to be adjusted so that they have the maneuvering space next to it. All they do is show the one space, but not an adjacent space next to it. You're supposed to have handicap space plus the hatched maneuvering space next to it.
It's dirt parking, if I'm not.
It's a gravel parking lot, yes.
Okay, so can you.
They're still gonna, they could still paint, they could still paint it. They'll have to probably paint it every year, they'll have to repaint it.
Okay.
Because I don't, I can't imagine it'll stay.
Right.
I think it's for, cost-wise, it's, I think it's pretty, pretty minor for them.
Gotcha.
Other than that, there were no other issues that were outstanding on the letter. So I guess from that standpoint, I know what you talked about with Jamie at the last meeting, but I, I know it's still corrected, still open. The meeting's still open, so I think, at least from our standpoint, I think it'd probably be closed and voted on. And I think the only thing that would be outstanding for a decision to be given to them was the invoice, which I know the applicant had called us to get a copy of the invoice last week, so.
It's being processed through Kelly.
Gotcha, perfect.
So we have the peer review money?
Yes. Oh, yeah, I wouldn't let a hearing happen without them.
So would you accept a motion to follow the advice of Whitman and Bingham on numbers four and 17? Part of our decision and, and make a motion, we accept this plan?
I think we need to close the public hearing first and then.
Okay. So make a motion that we close the public hearing? Would you accept that?
I would accept that.
All right, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
In a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Right.
Right, okay.
I'll make a motion that we follow Whitman and Bingham's advice and add to our decision the item listed on four with their response and the item listed on 17 with their response, the handicap and the lighting.
Sure.
And that we, now that we accept these plans.
Sure. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yep.
Got a second from John. Any discussion on motion? All good with plans? So, all those in favor? Okay. All set?
Charlie, there's decision paperwork in there. If you just want to sign the back page and I'll get the decision typed up. You got it, filed with Town Clark.
I drove by there. It looks great over there.
It's beautiful.
They've done a fantastic job.
Yeah, I couldn't see their vision at first, but.
I think they had to put that way.
Well.
They're working hard.
They did a phenomenal job. It was fantastic.
I guess the place that's supplying their dip buckets for their ice cream were supposed to deliver like on Monday and then the factory caught on fire on Friday and they lost all the product that they were supposed to, for the inside of their trailer.
Oh, jeez. That's awful. So I guess this is what she's making.
So we just need three copies of that signed.
Three of these?
Yep.
Wes, I don't think I've ever seen lines painted on dirt.
I haven't.
Yeah? Yeah?
I've been to a lot of dirt parking lots, never seen lines.
A lot of them don't, but I have, I've seen it in a couple places, yeah. A lot of the ones I can think of are older businesses. The one off top of my head I can think is Kay's, but they don't know, they don't, they don't, definitely line out there, but.
Yeah.
But I don't know if they have a handicap, I think they have a handicap sign up though.
Did they do a couple of signs instead of painted lines?
Problem is, is the dead spot.
And they get chewed.
Such a small lot. That's the only issue with that, so maybe we'll see what happens over time, but. The only ones, yeah. But they, they did, they showed us being striped, so.
Okay. So I don't believe there's anybody here for Mr. and Mrs. LeClark, correct? So I think we're gonna hold on to, actually, so we have an open, so at this point I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
We have to open it and then continue it or?
It's already open, so.
Ooh, but do we continue it from the last time?
Yeah, it's open already.
It's already open.
It's continued, so it's still open.
Okay. Um.
So moved.
So. Just, should we go to the next date or should we go like two months out?
Yeah.
Two months out?
Yeah.
Two months out.
Okay. We'll go two months out on that one. Uh, do I have a second? Dennis?
I'll second that, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Chris, are you gonna understand?
Understanding on this one, yep.
Perfect. So on that one. So the addendum to the stormwater management plan. Do we have somebody?
If, and if he's agreeable, can I ask the, the board if you can have a conversation with the school project while I have a conversation with the Gale Associates out in the hallway about, I received, the reason I asked the question is I received some information today.
Sure.
In an email this afternoon, so I wanted to have a conversation with them about one of the items on their letter that maybe we can hopefully take care of this tonight for them and
Sure.
while they made the trip down, if you want to take this, if, if you're okay with taking the school project first.
I have no problem with that, anybody have an issue? Sure.
Instead of having them make another trip down.
You got it. Sounds good. Okay.
Yeah, be that big, great.
So. Yes, sir.
Do you want me to sign this or?
Uh, yes, please. That's, because that's for the other one.
Remember how easy we were last time?
Been a while since we've been in front of here.
impressed last time.
Two years, I think.
Mr. Bo, we remember.
Oh, yeah.
You guys remember us?
Yeah, we remember. We won't forget that for a while.
Well, we're glad to be in front of you again. Thank you, thank you for.
Thank you.
As you know, the schools are well on their way right now, just about complete. As a matter of fact, they were putting sign down today. But something that came up is that Rick's group was looking at putting in a storage building outside of the building here, but prioritize equipment that would be used for maintenance of the school to be a trap.
I have, yeah, basically I need a small, we're gonna have a lot of sidewalk, a lot of concrete area that I can't put a truck in on, so I have a similar piece down at Narragansett that I use around the school on here. It's basically gonna be a winter piece of equipment that I can get out and do the sidewalks with. Couple of attachments for it, heat plow, sweep the broom, snow blower, that are all interchangeable. But I can't get it in the building to store it and I don't want it sitting outside at the school, so I want to be able to have a small facility that I can put this in, yeah, lock it up basically.
The area, we, we looked around the school.
Didn't have a lot of space to put anything, did you?
Pretty tired of real estate and all around. We were looking at a squat, which is, it's kind of the north, the northwest corner of the, of the front, was the, sorry. And we picked up three parking spaces that are in that corner right now. The, the structure itself is about 15 feet by 20 feet, prefabricated metal floor, as Rick said. And it'll be on a concrete pad right now, a poor concrete pad in that area, yeah, the structure will grow on that. It's outside of all the setbacks, it could be from the side yards that happened. And with that, lots of green spaces of sort of the second page there. We looked at areas where we could pick up parking and what seems to make the most sense to pick up the parking is that the angled parking on Wellington Road right in the front is currently at a 60 degree angle. Yeah, 60 degree angle, there's 27 parking spaces there. If, if we change it to a 75 degree angle, which is what you're seeing on that front of the first page of the plan there, that, that picks up four additional spaces, so you're up to 31. So you pick up, you pick up the three spaces that you lost plus you left one more space. And if you look at the last page, that's the, that's the 60 degree parking, so you, just to see a comparison. See the two together and what it does. And we, I, we want to leave it with some angle there so that when you, so when people pull in and then back out, you have the sense of backing out at that, so you're still facing in the direction you're going and you don't get confused with backing up and then coming out there.
Wasn't that area supposed to be considered the drop-off area for?
There's, there's some, some of it would be used for drop-off during the morning. Dropping off, this was drop-off for the, for the smallest kids.
Yeah, well, it was supposed to be at the, would be the southwest corner.
Exactly. So we were the vision that you, you pick up these spaces on this end here, that, that would, well, you pick them up right through. Three of these would, would be used more for visitors. These spaces in here, this parking lot here, is mainly dedicated to visitors.
It's going to be dedicated to visitors?
Excuse me?
That's going to be a visitors parking?
Uh, many of them are. This whole row right here is for visitors.
Because that was 23 spaces in there originally, I believe.
Yeah.
Where's the?
Where's the drop-off area?
That's the old playground.
I think they're referring to on Wellington Road.
This is the staff park, I know.
If they drop a kid off and there's a car in front of them.
Yeah, that was going to be behind the police station. Yeah, there were 18 spots there.
That's how I would win it. They described it to us first time, it was like you're gonna drop your kids off. The teacher's gonna meet them.
And they gain space.
So.
So just changing the angle of those spaces you pick up that is not?
Yeah, you do, you pick up four spaces.
Just changing the angle?
Yes.
Is it, is there a? Is there or was there and is no longer a sidewalk or a place where kids are getting dropped off and they're getting walked in off the road?
There's still a sidewalk here. Along, along, at the back end, at the back of the park, there's a, there's an eight-foot sidewalk on that.
Right, but if, if there's parking all along here, where does the drop-off, how, how do you drop off?
Oh, the drop-off is a, is a pull-in.
Oh, it's a pull-in drop-off, that's the idea?
Exactly, because these are, these are the smaller kids out of here, these are the kindergarten and preschoolers. They, they, they drop off and it's time, drop them off, walk them off.
I see. So you're not planning on dropping kids on Wellington Road and they're walking through the park cars?
That's the, about the only place you can put that, isn't it? How about behind the police station, is that?
Well, there, there really isn't any additional area there. We, we looked at, we looked at places to put more spaces, we looked at places to put, put the shed.
It seems like this.
To stay within the setbacks, the zoning setbacks and at the back of the police station where it's just constructed, there's, there was a little bit of land there, but there is not, there's a, there's a roping and, and that took up possible area where the shed was.
I mean, I don't, I don't see what our, why we even have a say in this, to be quite honest. I mean, it's, we need, we need a building and as long as the setbacks are there, it's the building inspector's approval process, okay? It's not like we can.
I did, I did talk with him, but he was fine with this, he just said it presented to you people.
Yeah. But are we approving something here?
No, I guess we're.
It's a change of plans, so I mean, I guess I think we technically have to. I think it just, and I, I have to, just for a moment, I think it does illustrate the fact that, you know, the plans, from day one when we said there were issues, went into this much of a problem to even put up a building. I think it just clarified, it, it proves our point that the, the space was not the ideal for the school. Because if you can't even find a spot to put a shed, then clearly there was an issue with the space, so I just had to say that, so.
Get that off your chest.
Just had to get that off my chest.
I understand, Charlie.
So.
You're the same way, same sentiments.
Yep.
But I guess if they gotta do it, you gotta.
No, and I was gonna say, I mean, at this point now, it's.
Which, which, which are, which are, I mean, am I wrong?
You got no say.
That's what, exactly.
You can't say no.
Well, we already, we've already learned that lesson.
So, but is there, is there, is there something that we have to approve? Is there a modification to the site plan oversight?
It's the addendum, I think.
Uh-huh.
Like an addendum.
Yeah.
An addendum, okay.
So, I would say probably just for the circus show of just, you know, making.
Making sure, okay, yeah, so I make a motion that we accept the amended plans as submitted.
Yep. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, do we have any discussion on that? All those in favor? Nice proof. You got it.
I have one of us.
What did you say?
Reluctantly.
Reluctantly, Charlie.
I believe I said extremely reluctantly.
Extremely reluctantly.
Exactly.
The playground that was put in, a re, re, put in, was erected on a blacktop surface?
Is it rubber?
It was asphalt put down, but then there's a coating of material going in, probably gonna slide tomorrow.
Is it in now or yet, is it yet?
It's not in there yet, the, the material's going in probably tomorrow.
It was supposed, the material was supposed to be delivered today.
It's not gonna be on asphalt. I've, I've read the, I've read the blogs, no, it's not on asphalt.
That was a horror story waiting to happen.
It's a perfect example of, you know, people not knowing what's going on.
Let him play.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I think it's kind of cool how you can make up four spaces by changing that.
Sorry.
Everybody, everybody has. Yeah.
Guy from our town, is he kind of the highway department?
He does.
Yeah, it's different front. No, this is.
Yeah.
He's specifically a school.
Yes.
What's his name? Frank?
Rick.
He seemed like a nice guy.
He's on the ZBA too.
Oh, that's where I recognize this, okay. Yeah. He's, he was, he's actually been before our board before. Or from the, um. The, from the upside. He's very vocal, exactly.
Yeah, yep.
No, it's, it's.
Yeah, you got his point through, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
So it was, uh, I have an extra copy here, I made a note on some of it.
What are we looking at here?
What's that? Again, Wesley Fliss, Whitman Bigham Associates, um.
Armin Dufresne from Gale Associates.
Mm-hmm. So at the, the last meeting, no Gale had presented the plans. Uh, since then, we did a peer review. Uh, we sent off the peer review to Gale Associates. Today, we received a peer review response letter, an updated detail page, and then also updated calculation, as requested. And so I can quickly go over the items that we had on our peer review, uh, and then we can talk about some of the responses, and then just talk about a couple of things that I think either needed to be conditioned, um, or just discuss with the board and how you wanna handle it, and then kinda move on from there and see how you wanna handle the, the closing of the, the public hearing part of this. So the, the first item had to do with just making sure that because it is an addendum to the stormwater management bylaw, that they do meet all the stormwater standards. And I say refer to a later section in the letter. The site plan review, just talking about snow storage, make sure the snow storage is shown on the plan, and then, um, the response on that is that the snow storage won't change what was previously proposed. And I wasn't sure because I know some of the drainage had been removed and, uh, from the previous plan. Item number three had to do with the composition of the porous pavement. Uh, you obviously, the biggest change on this is that there's no more stormwater. Uh, B M Ps, it's all porous pavement that's gonna take care of the stormwater that falls, uh, onto the project. And so D E P recommends, uh, they have a recommendation with regards to the composition of the porous pavement, what's under the porous pavement, to make sure that it, uh, it is, acts properly over time.
Now, that was something Jamie had mentioned that, uh, I guess there's an airport someplace and.
Nashua?
Was it Nashua? Yeah, so, um, do you have any experience with the?
And so that was, um, some of the back and forth had to do with regards to that composition of it.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason for it, a lot of it, and, and the response from Gale Associates, and I'll quickly touch on that, is uh, because it's not a, a parking lot, uh, because it's, uh, airport, there's no salt and sanding proposed as part of this. Some of those, uh, smaller layers of, uh, the choker course is what really the biggest item that's not on that detail. It's not gonna be part of the project, since that, that's not gonna be there, uh, but there's no real need for it as, uh, Gale sees it as because there's no salt and sand being proposed. Uh, they're, the way they're proposing the porous pavement is sufficient for what they see as, as necessary. And so that's what I wasn't sure if the, the board wanted to condition a favorable decision that no salt or sand is used on, uh, this area.
So you're, so are you, are you agreeing that, that, I think you referred to it as a choker course?
Yep.
Which I'll be interested to know exactly what that means in a sec. Um, is it required? Are you agreeing it's not required if they don't, if they?
If they don't sand and salt, yeah, because you're not looking at any dirty water, I guess, at that point.
Okay.
That's the biggest thing that you, you know, obviously in where we are in the northeast, we see a lot of that being an issue.
And exactly what, does a, a choker course do, i- is that just?
It's just a finer, um, finer, um,
Filtration?
Layer, I guess, uh, yeah, just so when the, the sand and the salt hits it, it stays in that, and then it doesn't impact the
Groundwater.
The bigger, uh, thicker, thicker section of gravel underneath it, that, that's gonna really infiltrate the water.
What eventually happens to it?
What eventually happens to it, that's what really gets cleaned. When they, so as part of this and, and part of their original application, I think they made a part of the presentation too, is they have to come in and vacuum the, the surface every so often as needed. But because you're not sanding and salting.
Who follows up on that?
Well, the, the owner of the airport, which is the city of Gardner, would be responsible for that. And they would have to maintain it because there's a life, from what I understand, a lifespan is twenty years. And so they need to last for twenty years. For it to last twenty years, they need to make sure it's maintained properly. And the city is obviously.
Tending as a vacuum?
If, if needed.
Let's, let's just go with the no sand and salt recommendation.
Right, cause that way.
Yeah, right, let's just eliminate this and make it simple for everybody.
Even over time, they may still have to vacuum it even without the sand and salt, but it shouldn't be as much of an issue.
Cause naturally, it's porous, so even if sand blowing will eventually.
Exactly, and anything blowing onto the site would eventually clog that up too, so. That's part of their maintenance, that's in the documents, they have a, you know, their, their drainage analysis in there. Right in there is their maintenance schedule.
Right.
Just for my own purpose, is, when we talk about porous, is it like a hair porous or like a toothpick porous? Do you know what I mean? Like, I'm trying to understand, like, porous, does it look like?
You didn't bring out samples?
I know.
You wanna show it, tell.
I actually have a good picture of this.
Right?
When it's raining, and, and it works really well.
It was, with aggregate, and the pavement that they use is just, it's a bigger aggregate, so the water.
It's a little bit, it looks like popcorn, a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay.
So, so it's bigger than both of those things.
Okay, I understand.
Um, the, the beauty of this is, uh, because of the cost of airplanes, and most of them are made from metal, there is never salt, sand, or any other chemical put on a pavement. If it snows, they scrape it off, if it ices out, and it's not usable, they close it down. So it's never a situation where we have to bring some, you know, uh, chemical in there to get rid of the ice. Eventually, uh, we try to orient them from east to west, so they can get some sunlight during the day. Outside of that, that's what we do. And by the way, the Nashua one has been in practice now for, this is going on its third year, but two winters and springs, and they've never had an issue with it. And if you want, I'll definitely send a picture to you guys so you can, you can see it.
Yeah, we actually, I.
All right, I'll definitely do that.
And they do vacuum it?
Uh, not yet, we haven't had to do anything to it.
Cause again, without having the sand actually being, so like if it was used in a regular parking lot, I'm sure, you know.
Oh, on a street, on a parking lot, any place like that, you, you'd have to do something else.
I think it's interesting, I just would like to know more about the materials, it sounds like an interesting, you know, application in certain places. Especially with stormwater management and things like that, so.
It saved a lot of money to Nashua, saved them close to a hundred fifty thousand dollars, so.
Is it typically only to be used in an airport? Or would you use it under?
It's used all over the place.
Yeah, there are restrictions to the applications that D E P doesn't like to be seen. But you can use it in small parking lots, or, so, so we see it all, you know, we see it, but not very often because the maintenance part of it becomes a.
Problem.
Yeah.
Especially up here, up in the north.
And then you don't see it much in aviation either. Actually, the Nashua job is the first one the F A A approved, uh, where you have airplanes actually traveling over it. It's worked, it's worked nicely.
Interesting.
And I think this, yeah, and I think it's because of the weight of the planes, right? You can't use it on the bigger planes, right, so.
Uh, I don't know about that.
Yeah.
The end of the lane, it's pretty good here. I mean, it's pretty solid, uh, you know, cross section that, that they have to put in, so. But here we're talking.
Small apartment.
Yeah, small, I mean, you can pull the thing yourself.
Right.
You know, it's not big heavy aircraft.
Right. Another thing that they did is they also, again, like I said, revised a detail in the plan, just making sure that, uh, the notes were consistent in what they should be, they make sure that there's no, um.
Right.
Top or subsoil underneath that porous pavement, such that it's not restricting the infiltration of the water underneath the porous pavement. Item number four had to do with testing underneath the porous pavement. D E P asked for testing under infiltration devices. The response that they gave was regards to, um, that the two, it was two test pits done prior, outside the limits of the pavement, that were consistent. And so what I would just suggest to them is when they're digging up this area, to make sure that the soils are consistent with what was being shown. If there's any issues that they need to come back in front of the board to.
Change it.
They might have to change, but, I mean, I know the material out there was pretty good material.
Yeah.
Um, and the, and the groundwater was pretty deep, so. Number five had to do with, uh, the kelks that needed to be updated, actually with regards to item number four too. And those two kelks were updated, like I said, they, they sent over the updated kelks, and so we were fine with that. Uh, there's enough, uh, storage underneath the porous pavement to handle the, uh, required recharge and water quality volumes, uh, per D E P. Uh, number six had to do with the recharge rates that were used in the kelks. So that's what Armin and I talked about in the hallway. They're gonna update the kelks, it shouldn't, it shouldn't make any, uh, difference with regards to, uh, the design. But the kelks should be consistent with regards to, one calc was using one number, the other calc was using a different number, it just should be consistent. Number seven had to do with the Nepedes permit, and I know this was something that we had on the last permit that was issued by the board. And I believe the board asked us for, uh, I think I just copied to make sure that was done prior to construction. I'm not sure if, I don't remember how it was conditioned though before, so I don't know. Might have to look at how the decision was written before, if that was given to the building inspector, if it was given to this board. But I think it was a condition of the, uh, approval last time, that there was a, uh, just verification that, that permit was, uh, granted from the E P A. And then number eight had to do with, uh, the capacity of the porous pavement, and so that was what I wanted to, uh, talk with Armin out in the hallway about, was D E P recommends that porous pavement absor, absorbs seventy to eighty percent of the rainfall that falls on it. Um, the way it's designed is everything right now, um, is pitched out away from the building. And, uh, basically to infiltrate a hundred percent of the rainfall inconsistent with, uh, D E P recommends, uh, the calculations to be done. And so that was, uh, a question that I had for Armin, was if either a berm be placed in the exterior of the pavement so that all the water is retained in the pavement, or the pavement is regraded slightly so that all the water is retained in that manner also.
Okay.
And so you can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but I think they, they agreed to that as, um.
Which one?
Either one of, I, I, to be honest with you, either one of us.
I'm not sure yet.
I think it's that whatever ones cost cheaper, I guess, from there. And I don't have an issue with, as long as the water is retained within the, the pavement, because that's how their calculations are. Cause if, if it isn't, then it'd be shown increase off the site, and that's, um, not the intent here.
In a berm or just a less, a lesser slope?
Yeah, either the, either the grade gets bucked in the opposite direction that it is now, just so it retains the water in the parking lot, yeah.
Kinda stays there.
It's not a, we, we didn't see it as being a huge amount of fill that would have to be changed there, it's not a, it's not a large slope, it's only one percent slope.
Slow change.
So maybe there's a, a lobe, uh, basically a pool basically created in the, around the outskirts of the parking. But other than that, like I said, there weren't a lot of comments, so.
Okay.
And I think, you know, from the sounds, Gale's comfortable with a couple of recommendations. I don't know if the board had any other questions from either one of us.
Anything from the board?
They're looking for a vote.
Well, I guess we would need to hear.
We actually don't want to, I think we're gonna, because of the outstanding. No, let me mention that there's outstanding.
I, I guess.
Yeah, so I'm new in this position, um, there was an admin here before me, and I reached out to Chris Reynolds this morning, um, I didn't realize that the account was not enough to cover the fee for the peer review. They didn't have enough funds. Um, so I've got an invoice together and got it over to Chris to get to the city of Gardner, um.
So I don't know if we wanna just, like, hold off the vote until?
Well, I think we would hold off because we would wanna know what, um, what remedy they're gonna use for.
Right.
Either they're gonna slope it, or they're gonna.
Either that or you can condition, so you don't, obviously you're gonna write up the decision, but you're not gonna hand out the decision tonight.
Right.
So could you hold the decision until they pay you?
Absolutely. I can get that type of.
And then what I would, you can condition it such that the water is retained within the parking lot, and they have to decide which is the best way they wanna do it, I guess would be an easier way to condition it. So they don't have to come back at the, you know, the next meeting.
They'll come back to you with their decision?
They can come back with a, a updated plan and just email to you guys and just C C us on the plan too. Like I said, I think it's a relatively simple adjustment. And they could figure out which one's more costly.
Thoughts, John?
So, continue.
Um, I don't know if my thoughts have changed. I mean, I think we would want to f, uh, plan that, we would wanna know, this is my, this is just me, I'm only one person.
Yep. No, that's, that's why.
I think I'd wanna know what the choice was before we approved it. I mean, cause we kind of already know, like, we already know, like, if we, if we approve stuff conditionally, we kind of always know that the stormwater has to be a certain way, and so I think we could approve everything that way. I think usually we see, we see it.
The final.
Especially in the stormwater stuff, we see it, and then we approve it. Tip, typically, I mean.
The funds that.
We're just talking about the difference between a, a berm or a slope to keep a hundred percent of the water on the surface, right?
Yep.
Correct.
Just to, like you know, in Nashua, if you looked at the slope there, the, in the middle of the taxiway is the permeable pavement.
Mm-hmm.
And then the slope goes up on both sides towards the building. But it, you can have a, a fairly decent slope there and it can still travel, so I don't see it as a big issue at all. It's a matter of regrading the taxiway somewhere.
Would you be, would?
Continue the. We continue here, I guess.
It's up to the board, anyways.
Would, would we, would you, John or Dennis, consider a, make an a motion with the contingency that it's, they fix that issue with grading? And just, just leave it as one, not with berm, just fix it with grading, so that, and that, and that's a condition of our decision, and we have to see the plan before the work begins?
Well, yeah, but we should leave that decision to them, after which is the best?
I, I, like I said, I don't have an issue with it being conditioned, I, I think it's something that easily is fixed. Like that it just.
But we definitely need to make sure that we hold the approval until the, the funds are there too.
Okay, so with those, those are the two conditions, that we hold on to the approval till the funds are gotten, and that they don't begin work until they give us a draft of how they're gonna meet that slope issue.
We can do that right away.
Sure.
So I'll make that motion, that we, 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 we vote on it tonight, vote that with those two conditions written in.
So again, do we have an open, we?
Yeah.
Open.
Close it first, right?
Yep.
I make a motion, we close the open, or the public hearing?
We have to funding, is there a issue?
That's gonna be a condition on the, the second. Um, so I've got a motion on the table, do I have a second? To close the public hearing? I have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Public hearing is closed, okay?
I make a motion that we vote on this plan with two conditions, one, that we don't release the decision until we have full funding, and two, that we, uh, that we get a copy of how you solve that slo, slope issue, so it's a hundred percent catching of water before you begin construction.
And we're voting to approve the.
Yep.
Sounds good. I have a motion, do I have a second? Actually, can I, as the chairman, can I second?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're gonna take two minutes. I don't know when they're looking at the second auction, or find the video.
I'm gonna sneak out now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know we said.
We'll see you later.
That was a hundred.
I was, I was telling the last, they raised almost like twenty five to thirty grand or something, over here. That's crazy.
Let's do the, uh.
Does it have to be? The section with Wellington itself.
I was gonna say, cause they have to be, probably have to all be approved.
Charlie, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as, right? As, as.
I, I second that.